My damn doctor would not give me an
It's tempting.
Obamacare requires that they ruled out the influenza, rule out bacteria, and then if you got viral, they won't give you any of my
Yeah, I have an idea. I don't know if you could make that look white.
It's just
You could put a double
Well, I'm the bomb watching out here.
If you could find a way to decorate it.
Thank you.
He and Nancy.
Thank you.
Put a double aside.
And Harry.
How do you even read?
The triumvirate.
Yeah, no, it's not a quarter. That wouldn't be that big.
I gotta send you some emails, I guess.
Well, it'd be easier to read than
Yeah.
I've got a brother that's a Tea Party guy, heavy duty.
That'd be a problem if you make it look good.
You don't need two of us, Senator.
You're on your Tea Party, huh?
He's almost getting over the top.
Her turns first.
Yeah. She's covered thirty days.
I'm gonna write Jackass on him, bye.
No, I don't know.
Yeah, Mike, I'll call that because we don't So how'd you make out with the in-laws? A surprise visit from Yeah, from father-in-law. He just causes so much stress and anxiety.
In her?
Yeah, in her.
Toxic.
It's just toxic.
Oh, that's a shame.
He showed up. Said, hey, I'm in town, I want to see you. He tried to, I have a foundation, it didn't work. Yeah, exactly. And I was like, why don't you meet me? Like, I'll come. He just kind of hangs around and hovers.
Did he come last? You were there?
Uh, yeah, I was over there for about five minutes. I had some, his brother was there, his brother needed a leave, we talked about the dinner.
What was that?
That was good. I didn't know we had that.
You?
Good enough. That was me. Don't worry.
I saw a laptop and I'm like, oh, maybe.
The projector has speakers, I didn't remember.
Ah, it does? That is interesting.
I text around here now.
Yeah, I text. Good enough.
Yeah, that was last night.
Oh, is it not seven o'clock yet?
Well, we've got one minute.
One minute. That clock is off a little.
It's seven o'clock now.
Four by nine.
It's seven.
Four by nine, that would be a good size.
Yeah, it'd be pretty big.
It's too big? How big do you think it ought to be?
I don't know, I'd have to see it. Four by nine. Depends how it melt in with the sign or whatever.
Yeah, it depends on what size. What do you think, Dan? How big should it be?
I'd have to see it as well. I'd have to
That feeling.
I'd wanna, I'd wanna see it.
I think we should get Chase's architect to draw some stuff up. He's probably decent.
Price would be right.
Use the same, no, because we're gonna use the same sign as, sign to sign, it's already been done.
No, tell them we want something with the nice, they can't really do, do that anyway, because it'd be a totally different sign.
All you gotta do is lift the arch, all you gotta do is tighten it. You wanna keep it the same.
You don't need a big Villa Park thing there, everyone knows, I mean, you're in the middle of town.
Okay.
Pound it?
Yeah.
Hit it.
Good evening. The Villa Park City Council welcomes you to this meeting. We encourage your participation. The agenda contains a brief, general description of each item to be considered. Tonight is a special council meeting. It's called a budget study session. It's not a normal council meeting. And I'd like to go ahead and ask Jared to do a roll call, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilwoman Fasenelli is absent this evening. Councilman Mills?
Here.
Councilwoman Polly?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Burnett?
Present.
Mary Reese?
Here, thank you very much.
About all of the chairs.
Uh, let's see, we are gonna do the pledge of allegiance, and I would like to ask Rich Olmer if he'd be so kind as to lead us, even though his voice isn't working so well. Minimal words, minimal
Please place your hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Rich. All right. Now we move to oral communications. Members of the public in attendance wishing to address the city council on matters not otherwise appearing on the agenda and within the jurisdiction of the city council, upon recognition by the preceding officer, state their names, address, and subject. Oral communications are governed by Government Code Section 54954.3 and Villa Park Municipal Code Section 2-3.10. Oral communications shall be limited to a time period set by the preceding officer, three minutes for individual speakers. Do we have any speakers tonight for oral communications? Seeing none, we'll move into our only item for the night, the budget study session. Tonight, we're gonna discuss the fiscal year 2013 and 14 operating budget and seven-year capital improvement plan. I am assuming, Michelle, you take it from here?
Yes, I will. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, here we are again at our thirteen fourteen fiscal year budget, and I've prepared our presentation to go over just kind of the bullet points, and for Greg as well as Deanna, we have gone over some of the details of how the budget goes, since they're new on the council. But what I'd like to do is first, Lauren Manning helped with do the budget cover, as you see up on the screen, and I handed out this, right before the council meeting. So this is what our cover will look like, so we're kind of excited. Everybody's more creative than I am when it comes to graphic design, and that's not my specialty. Yeah, I'll stick with the numbers. So, just a, just a basic overview of what we wanna go through on, on the budget processes. First, what we do is we take the, tonight we're gonna take the draft of the, the budget and the capital improvement plan, which is over seven years, and bring it to you as a full council for your discussion, your input, any refinement. And our goal is to bring it to the next meeting and have it approved to be in line with our July one beginning of fiscal year. So, we're gonna understand the financial climate that we're in right now, how it affects the city of Villa Park, any recommendations or comments that council has, direction, and approval of our capital improvement budget, which we've gone over, starting from our strategic planning meeting that we had in, I believe it was February, and then how you would draft staff on the final consideration of the budget. The budget basics that we go through, they start out, we take the audited financial statements from the previous year. We start with that as our baseline, that's our real numbers. We estimate our expenditures to the best of our knowledge based on, we start in May, and then we extrapolate based on what we know. It's not all cyclical, so there's, there's variations, it's not a twelve-month chunk every month, so we estimate our expenditures that way. Revenues, you know, that, that's usually where we, we see a lot of movement, and we've, we've been, we've had, we've seen some increases, which is, is good for us, as well as some minor decreases in what we've budgeted, but overall, we're doing very well in our revenues this year. We take those numbers, and then we, we step with the next year and what, what all the legislative offers, because most of our money comes from the state if it doesn't come from our property taxes. We take our, the assessor's valuation of what our property taxes should be, based on the information that we get, we budget for our revenues. From there, the next step is, what do we need to keep the city moving? Our overhead, that's, that's the, the main thing that we have to focus on, how to keep the city services, which is our staff and our recurring contracts for maintaining the city. Next, we, we go over the goals of staff and council that we've, again, that we met at our strategic planning meeting, what was the goals that the city council wanted to see staff move in, some of the big projects, or some of the revamping that they wanted. We take all that into consideration, then we start putting those expenditures in. From there, again, from direction from management and council, we determine our capital improvements projects. Once we get all of those numbers moving, we, we start inputting them into the formulas and the spreadsheets, and then we do a comparison of revenues versus expenditures, and the, the thing that we must be most concerned with is the general fund. Obviously, that is where, what makes or breaks the city. All the other funds that we have are self-balancing, a revenue comes in for a specific purpose that has to go out for that purpose. So our general fund is the one that we're so concerned about, making sure our revenues exceed our expenditures. We work with the Budget Finance Committee, and then we bring our best, best foot forward and bring our final product to the budget study session, which is what we have here today. We have exact same groups of funds this year. Our general fund, obviously, when we're gonna focus on the majority of tonight. Our gas tax fund, which is our, our street and roads, what we do to improve that. Age of Cities, we get some money to do various improvements in the city, whether it's litter pickup, whether it's a little money for a street project. Traffic Safety Fund, again, that's money that we receive that offsets some of our charges for our cops, our law enforcement contract. Measure M money, again, is the M2 money that we use for our streets, improvements for our streets. Sewer maintenance is for the Sycamore pump station, that's the assessment for those residents that live on Sycamore. AQMD is monies we received for, we specifically use them for our natural gas vehicle, reduction of emissions. It's, again, these are all self-balancing accounts. Our cops fund, we use that specifically, our city specifically uses it to fund the special, or the school resource officer. And the CLEEP fund, we are using that money to purchase anything for frontline law enforcement. That, again, was a, a grant that we received back in, I believe, 2001. Our capital improvements fund, those are grants that we receive to do our major capital projects. And then lastly, our sewer improvement fund, which is, again, an assessment on our tax rule to maintain the, the look of, or the infrastructure of our sewers. Here, here we come to our budget overview, and we're gonna speak on the general fund in relation to the, all the other funds within the city. And our available fund balance for, the easiest way to, that's, that's kind of your extra cash. This is not money that is designated for a purpose, that is not money that is put in a, budgeted for. These aren't actual expenditures, this is your extra cash in your general fund. So, this is where, that, that number is, as Councilman Polly and I were speaking of earlier, is, what's my comfort level? That's, that's at the end of the day, you know, what do we like to have that at? So, we, we're, right now, we're at the best position I have seen since I've been here in 2007. We're at a million, one eight two, and that started as of June 30th, 2013. Now, our total city funds is one million, seven hundred and change, and basically, we're at fifty-nine percent of all of our available fund balance is in the general fund, which is great for our city specifically. Our revenues this year that we're anticipating is $2,599,400, and that is in relation to how we budget our revenues is as conservative as you can possibly be. And as, in councils past, we, you know, we get a recommendation that revenues are gonna increase by two percent, we leave it flat. So, we try and make sure that we budget our revenues low and our expenditures high to, to give us an extra cushion, so we're not in trouble in any specific year. So that's kind of our philosophy on how we budget for our revenues. Our expenditures here, as you see, is $2,563,300, and that is merely a $36,000 variance. Our, our revenues are anticipated to be $36,000 greater, which is, which is good, it's more. It may seem small, and it may, that, that may trigger, you know, wait a second, that's, that's very close, but again, if, if I can just extrapolate a little bit, our taxes are the eighty percent of what we receive. Currently, we have budgeted $2,106,000 for next year. What we've received to date this year, as of May 31st, is $2,183,000. So there's $80,000 right there that we're not anticipating, and we're, and according to the assessor, we're supposed to have an increase. But we don't take that into account because our taxes, I'm really conservative, and Budget Finance has agreed with me on that. So, we are structurally balanced, which is great, our revenues exceed our expenditures in, for operating purposes in the general fund, and then anytime you have a capital project, you may have matching funds in the general fund, which may take your expenditures up, but again, with a healthy available fund balance, that seventy thousand is not, it doesn't even phase our, our balance. So, on a whole, the, the general fund looks very healthy.
Chuck, can I ask, do you want a question during the time that you're presenting, or do you want them at the end, or where do you want them?
Probably at the end, if that's okay? Is that, is that
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay, perfect.
It's best.
Um, okay. To, this is a general fund, and this is a breakdown of all of our revenue sources, and as, as I mentioned, our taxes are at 2.1, and again, currently, we're, as of May 31st, we're already $80,000 over that for last year, and we're supposed to get an increase. So, these, these numbers are very conservative. Charges for services, those are building zoning fees that, you know, for the services provided, fines and forfeitures, a lot of parking license and permits, those are our franchise fees, and are some of our building permits, and then we have other revenues from various sources, and use of money is the interest income that we have. Revenue from other sources is the money that we receive from various agencies outside of the standard, regular, budgeted routine, ongoing
So, Chuck, what's the largest contributor of that?
For the revenue of other sources? I believe that one is our, one second. I can tell you that. My page is sticky, here we go. For this year, it is, we have local agency that, that includes our PEG money. So our PEG money is the, the franchise that we get for Public Asset Access TV. We have a state homeowners property relief that we also get, and we have our chamber support. So you combine all those, and it's
What percent?
Forty thousand.
Since you're asking, answering questions, Chuck, what was, what was the distinction between a $3,072 balance and a $4,555 balance on the prior screen?
Right, again, that's, when you have, you're gonna have, with capital projects, you have expenditures, and then you have the revenue coming in after the fact, because they're grants, or the reimbursement basis. So you're gonna have expenses in one year, and the revenue's gonna flow the next year. So the timing of it, it usually just straddles a fiscal year.
Okay, one of ours was the same, okay.
That's why this finance is so important, now, correct me, and that's why we have to keep track of it?
Right.
As opposed to getting in trouble like other cities.
Right, right, okay. And then, this is just a, a graph that I've taken from our budget that shows the revenues for the entire city, and obviously, about seventy percent of our revenues come from the general fund. And then our next biggest is to repair the infrastructure of our sewers. So those are the, the main funds that we have to take care of our city and keep it as beautiful as it is. So the initial thoughts on our revenues is that property tax, as I've mentioned, is largest revenue source, and again, we conservatively budget this low, and like I said, we've, we've been instructed that it's supposed to increase two percent, and we've remained, kept it flat. Sales and use tax, we have projected that one also to decrease about $11,000, and that may seem odd as our, we, our economy seems to be going up, and we've been projected for an increase, based on an outside source. However, our tax base has changed. So we're taking that to consideration and being, again, conservative, and budgeting low on that. Our property transfer tax this year has been extremely healthy. Last year, we received about $26,000. This year, we're at 50. Again, just because we're very conservative, that we, we believe the trend will most likely continue, based on the research we've done. However, we've taken it down a notch, just to make sure that we encompass any grips, if we have any glitches in the real estate market. Next, our other local agency revenue is budgeted decrease because we received so much funding this last year from Villa Park Community Service Foundation for our two signs. We also received a, or we used a large part of our fire stabilization money for some tree trimming, which we've exhausted most of that money. So we'll get a little bit this year, but it's, it's decreased from last year. I, I know this is, our state and motor vehicle license fees and our abandoned apprehension vehicle program revenues, we said that they ended last year because they were supposed to end last year. However, we've continually received just random checks, and although they say it's, you know, it's over, we, we believe it's over, so we're not budgeting for them, just as an FYI.
Yeah.
Building permit and plan check revenue, they are projected to increase based on the building activity in, in our economic rise, and that's, that has, Bill and I have sat down, and we've done some calculations, and it's, again, it's a fairly conservative number, but we do see some great, you know, things on the horizon, and he's busier than I'll get out right now. So, that's positive for the city as well. And missus revenue will decrease because this year, as I believe, we've, we've discussed, the, the county assesses a property tax administration fee, and they did an overhaul of how they calculated that, and they found out that they were overcharging us, and generously, they went back to 2006. So we get about a $20,000 chunk of change, and we should be getting it. I just got a letter, I believe, on the third, saying that we should get it in by June 30th. So, we won't obviously have that next year. And then HUDA, HUDA stands for the highway users Wait, is it okay? Highway users' tax, and this is state money that we receive, this is what we call our gas tax money, and 2103 is, it used to be our traffic congestion money, state moved it over to the HUDA account, and that was moved over last year. Apparently, they did a lot of misallocations, and this year, we were supposed to get 80,000 in that specific, specific, they have 2103, 2105, they have a bunch of different numbers that they specify to different street projects, and it went down by 20,000 for us this fiscal year, which we've already taken into account, and it is in our gas tax fund. However, they say it's gonna, it's gonna bump back up next year, but we've gotta stabilize it, we keep getting letters. So, we've kept it flat, based on the lower number that we just received. So, just to, just to give you a heads up on that, our grant awards that we believe we'll be getting this year is, we're still waiting to see if we got the catch basin, which is $200,000 from OCTA, and the match from the city is not an actual cash that we have to pay to OCTA, it's that we are required to maintain the basins, which we already do. So, it's just use of our manpower, which, which Mike and Rich will already do. So, that's, that's a great grant for us to receive, and then we also are receiving $125,000 of SLPP money, which is the state transportation, state, state and local partnership program for transportation, and that money, there's, there was a match that has to be matched by Measure M money, but it's also general fund money. So we're doing a large economy of scale project this year, which will encompass two years' worth of transactions. Next. This is the overview of our expenditures that is in the budget, and it's a comparison from the previous year to, based on our estimated actual and budget, and then the proposal for this year. Now, the, the big change, you'll see some variations within the accounts, and based on our fee study that we did this year, Ani did a fantastic job of really getting to the root of, okay, how much time do you spend on, how much time do you spend on that? And we really gotta, I feel for the first time, we have a great idea of where everybody spends their time, because there's a, everybody has their hand in a little bit of something. So it's, you're gonna see, like, the city managers, all of a sudden, you know, ninety-two thousand from, you know, seventy-three last year, why? And that's because the reallocation of time of the work that Jared's doing versus the work that, that maybe the part-time staff was doing previously, or that we had Ryan classified to. So we now have a really good cost allocation plan of salaries to the different accounts, and I, for the first time, feel very solid on those numbers. The big change is our capital improvements, and that was Mesa. Remember how we had, last year, we had budgeted, we were gonna do the Mesa Guard Run, we were gonna look into, see if the money was still there and whatnot. So that project has truly been set aside. So that's the big change in our capital improvements, and we also had money budgeted for the town center, starting off looking into doing, for lack of a better word, the football. And we haven't spent that yet, so, because we're still figuring out what city, the city council wants to, to do with that. So that's, those are some of the variations in the capital, and that's, that's where our biggest change is.
I'm, I'm so impressed by that efficiency of that top line. Look at that cost figure for the entire council. I mean, is that impressive, or what? Look at that.
Extremely.
Twelve-six.
Most cities have a bigger expenditure.
Right, here is an expenditure breakdown by function, and I think it shows a good use of our, our money. Our public works should be, one of the biggest things that we do is maintaining our streets, keeping the city looking beautiful, forty percent. The other is public safety, another thirty percent. That's where our money should be going. Administration, ten percent, twelve percent, fifteen percent, that's, that's good. That's, that's where you wanna be. And this is just a pie that can show you where we're spending our money and how resourceful staff has been in trying to keep it balanced in the proper areas. Next. This is where I'm, I'm just gonna go down, these are major, the major expenditures and why there's changes, and the common one that you're gonna see, the thread, like I told you, is the fee study. When we did figuring out where salaries went, they're just being, the salary, each employee is, their time is being properly allocated to the best, I think, in the, probably this five years that I've been here, or seven years, I don't even know how many years, seven, seven years that I've been here, that the, the staff time is truly accurate on this, and I'm feeling very confident about that. So that's what's gonna be the major variation in a lot of the accounts from each year. They either go up or they go down because of this reallocation. But the capital improvement program expenditures, a highlight to note that of all the capital projects that we're doing next year, about $400,000 worth, only eighteen percent is funded by the general fund. The rest is from grants, which is huge. That's how we, we'd rather have our projects be funded through other, other people's money than ours. So, we think that's a, that's a good point to bring out.
Well, isn't a lot of that our money, anyway?
What?
Isn't, isn't a lot of that our money, really, anyway? We don't, we don't get it back at a good rate at all.
Yeah.
Well, we, we are only surrendering eighteen percent to get
I gotcha. He's saying we're, we're donating way more than we're getting back.
Well
We are donating to the city.
But that's nothing that we have control over right here. True, though. City council, we have a, a slight increase from last year, because we're trying to encourage council to go to as many training venues as possible to be best educated on however they see fit, whatever they're interested in, whatever committee they're on, and they see fit, whatever they're interested in, whether committee they're on. And again, like I mentioned, the revised allocations of the comprehensive fee study that time is, for the city council is an increase. Again, the city manager, city clerk, finance, community preservation, planning and engineering, they all have ups and downs based on the just allocation of time. The city attorney, which we are bringing to a, as a, as a staff report next council meeting too, is, we've had the same attorney from beginning of time. And Mr. Fitman, Litman, Litman came on in 2008 at a reduced cost because monies were tight in that year. And he has not changed his rate since 2008. So, based on how much we're using him as of late and how much he offers and supports our staff, there's a nominal increase, which is, I believe, it's like $3,000. And then, and just, we're adding a little bit of a budget for extra attorney if we need it, which we rarely use. But for an annual retainer, it's very reasonable. And the service we get is, we feel top, top notch from Lieutenant Tucker.
What's the adjustment?
What?
3,000.
3,000, yeah, 2,700 total?
Yeah.
The, next is our support services, which is our general operating expenditures for the, for city hall. And the biggest increase, or the main increase, is, we've talked about this, that the California Joint Insurance, our Jet Powers Insurance Authority, which we are part of, has, over the past three years, be recalculating how they bill us on it for insurance purposes. And in the past, it didn't work out so well for them since it was more like a loan to us. So, now, we've, we've just, we, there's various options that we've chosen. And we chose the, there's a six installment plan and it's at 2%, which we will be paying $13,000 of interest over six years, which is nominal compared to the 200 and, I think it's 210,000, $10,000 that otherwise we'd pay that this year. So, we figured, go ahead.
Don't finish?
Oh. So, we figured that this, this would be the best use of our money to, and we can pay it off early if, if we have the extra cash. And if that's, council, what council approves.
Do we still have someone that's on that JPIA board that's representing from Villa Park?
Chair of Budget Finance Committee, Amy King.
Oh, okay. So, that'll be Mr. Barnett?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And how do they get away, from, from what I read, this is a retroactive action on their part. Is that, is that?
Well, how they did it in the past was every year, they called it their retro rolling deposit. And you would, your, your annual payment that we get, and I'll be paying it in a couple of weeks, is, will be based on a calculation for five years back on what actually happened. So, it, they were loaning us money, basically. And so, it's like, oh, well, you had a hit this year, you didn't have a hit this year, you did well, you know? So, there was just, it was up and down and up and down. And then there's a consolidated dollar amount, add that to your fee, and this is what you pay this year. So, they realized, oh, this wasn't very smart of us. So, they told us three years ago that this is what they were doing and that they would be coming out, rolling it out. And it's take, had a myriad of variations. And our product is now.
So, when we did our wash at the end, you know, to make things right, we would pay a chunk back to make things right?
That's, yeah, that's.
So, how is it gonna work? Is it, are they gonna be giving us a chunk back to make things right if we, you know, aren't eating up everything that we're paying in? Is that how that's gonna work?
Yes. What they're doing is, there's, there's two separate billings, if you will. They'll have the current new calculation that they're going from this point forward, okay? That's gonna, that's one part of your bill. The other part is this chunk of the previous calculation that they had. And so, we're paying, we've got that number, that number's not gonna change. This number will change based on our activity. So.
Okay.
What's, what's the, the year span that the, the, the rolling goes over?
Well, there's.
You don't want it all at once. They just roll.
Where they at, they, you, they had the option to pay it all this year, starting July 1 of 2013, 2013. And, I don't know what year we're in. And we opted for the, the sixth year. So, by that six.
But we're paying, we're paying interest on that, though.
Yeah, 2%, which is 13,000 over the full six years. Not, not, not bad at all. So, that number will not change. If that's what, is that what you were asking? Yeah. That's, that number's hard, fast. We, we sent it to them in our agreement, a contract to them. And we just received the bill.
Okay.
The next is, we have our law enforcement. That increased nominal, as we discussed last council meeting. The minor increase that we had there was a 1%. Public works, maintenance costs, just, you know, cost of doing business increased just a little bit. It's very nominal. And our street maintenance, in 1314, you see a large increase. And that's because we're doing the economy of scale, huge project this year. So, we didn't do a pavement management project in 1213. We're lumping two years' worth of monies into 1314 and doing a large street maintenance project. And we are also doing a curb and gutter improvements for the standing water issues, like the low spots. So.
We've been about $150,000 worth of gutter work.
Do you have any idea off the top of your head about how many areas they'd identified?
Uh, no. I, I have it on a map and there's circles all over the floor. So, I couldn't tell you.
I knew they'd collect this a while. Okay. I'm sure you'll bring it to us eventually anyway. I just wondered if you knew off the top of your head. And, and where is that money for that $150,000 worth of projects coming from? Is that?
Well, because it's streets. It can come from gas and it can come from Measure M and it can come from the general fund or any other ADC's. So, we're using the three funds to fund that entire project. We're doing it all together, the curb and gutter as well, so we don't, you know, rip up streets that we just paved. So.
That's good.
So, it's gonna all go at once. And we're gonna utilize those three fund, funding sources. So, the general fund has a piece, Measure M has a piece, and gas taxes.
Okay. What, I'm sorry.
Right, as well as the SLPP grant.
Okay. And the 150,000 that you've budgeted for that will cover all of those areas that have been identified?
Not all the areas. It's a startup.
What percentage of the areas?
I don't know.
Half, 25%?
I can get it to you.
Okay.
We contacted the Orange County Vector Control and they were able to get us their GIS layer of all their low spots. So, Akram went out and we tried to coordinate which streets were referenced on the PMP of pavement management program in relation to the curb and gutter work that needed repair.
I see.
So, we're doing them at the same time. As Michelle said, I mean, we don't wanna rip up curb and gutter on a primary street.
Yeah.
That's very good. So, then going forward, what your plan is, you know, years down the road, is to couple those projects?
Yes.
That's very, that's very smart.
And that's, that's another expenditure that we have this year. Every two years, we gotta do a pavement management plan. And so, that, that also, and that's with Civil Source.
Thank you.
Is there any, is there any other ways of doing the pavement management? In other words, other than the way we do it now, we have to dig it up and reconstitute the asphalt. Are there any other ways to do it that'll save money?
Pavement management is done by slurry seal, two-inch grind and overlay, or a full reconstruct, which is about six inches. So, every year, as you redo this PMP of pavement program, city engineer and Civil Source, our firm, will drive every street and then give it a grade. And then, based on that grade, if it's, you know, 8% or better, street life may be 10 years. If you slurry coat that, it would prolong it another 20 years. It, it's, it's an engineering formula that is way over my head. This year, I think we're doing a two-inch grind and overlay, which should prolong maybe 20, 30 years. But it's, it's ever-changing. Some years we'll do slurry project, some years we'll do the grind and overlay. Just depends what that PMP suggests.
Jared, it might be a good idea, not after budget and everything, to re, have Akram dust off that great briefing he did, because, for the benefit of the new council members.
Yeah.
And that will give you all of that, because you're gonna need it.
Okay.
It's good info.
Yeah, it's unfortunate. I had a call today from somebody, I think it was you, about squires. Some streets are right in the middle. They're in limbo, where you don't wanna slurry them because it will just crack very next year. And it doesn't warrant a full grind and overlay yet. So, you have to let it deteriorate until it gets to a certain point threshold. And then you go in and reconstruct it. So, here's the science to a computer.
Engineering.
Formula understanding, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
All right. The storm drain maintenance, we are increasing this one slightly for a new NPDS contract. As, in the past, NPDS is our National Pollutant Discharge Emissions, Elimination, close? Yes. And the, the key here is just to make sure that we're not sending stuff to our ocean. And, you know, it's, it's good maintenance of where we live. There's certain specific parameters that we need to stay up to date with. And we, we got a bid from a new company and very confident and very, very well-versed and are willing to take us in a, in a new direction, I think. So, we'll have some increases there.
But that, but that's ongoing.
That's ongoing, but this is, we, we've contracted with a new NPDS firm to bring us up to current, yeah, more technological versus maybe our little paper trails, like saying, hey, you do this, it will answer these five, you know, requirements for the state. Or if you do this, you know, this is what they do every day. You know, this is their specialty. So, we're getting a specialized contractor to come in to do what we would do every, you know, it's not Akram's specialty, but, or Civil Sources. They are doing it, but this company is gonna give us the Cadillac version of it.
And it's also part of protection, and we kinda know what's coming down the pipe with the water control.
And these fellows and gals are looking forward too. They, they kinda know what's going on.
Absolutely, absolutely. They're in the forefront.
So, in other words, we spent a little more money now, we'll save money later if we do it right.
And, or we won't get the fine that we got in 2007?
It's 50,000 dollars.
Well, it was whittled down.
We had to negotiate it down. It was huge, huge hit.
Yes.
Because, and it was all because of paperwork.
Yeah, the work had been done. The work had been done. It wasn't, had, didn't have the proper paper trail for the state. Therefore, they wanted to.
Sounds like IRS.
Yeah, exactly.
You don't play with them.
This firm currently manages Stanton and Seal Beach as well. So, they're very familiar with our San Ana Regional Water Quality Board permit. Orange County is split into two regions, San Diego, which is South County, and then San Ana region. So, they're very familiar with the San Ana region permit. This first year contract price is about $19,000. It's a little more expensive, only because they have to come in and essentially rewrite our program for us. It's just so deficient. And then, next year, it should drop about $9,000. It's based off the lip, the local implementation plan, which by the time we're setting it down with it, will be 12 three-ring binders that are put on a shelf somewhere. Unfunded state mandates, unfortunately. So, next year, it should drop to about $10,000 and much of it will be done in-house with, you know, Ryan or myself, or even Mike and Rich responding to a lot of these.
All righty, thanks.
Then we go to our sewer improvement. This year, this fiscal year, we'll have a decrease in actual expenditures. And that's because the final payments for our sewer conditioning TV monitoring was done last year, as well as two years' worth of sewer improvement. So, we had a big hit fund in 1213. Next year, we'll just have one year's worth of, you know, sewer improvements and, in line with the new sewer master plan. So, that's the variation in the sewer. Then our building, we have, we've estimated an increase. And this is due to the city absorbing the building inspector as an employee for the first full year. And previously, anytime we would, how we funded our building was, we, we paid Norris Repke for Bill's time. We gave him 80% of the revenue we brought in. And now, what we have to do is when Bill gets busy, even though he's budgeted for, you know, 20, 25 hours or 28 hours a week, we, if he has more work, there's revenue that's coming in to offset it. So, we've anticipated, since there's gonna be an increase in revenue, increase in expenditures to offset his time as well. So, it's, it's a match. And then, lastly, our sewer pump maintenance is one. We were gonna replace our pump this year. Akram said he thinks it had one more, a year's worth left of life, so we're gonna do it next year. And that'll be reflected in the expenditures next year. So, overall, we've, we've tried to cut as many areas as we could. We've tried to streamline. We've, in-house, we've changed some vendors, staff real allocations, rebidding on services. We're definitely looking at trying to become more efficient and more effective with the staff, the very small staff that we have. So, that is where we're at today. And now, to our personnel costs and salary benefits. You wanna make this one a little bigger, please? Thanks. Last year, our actuals were 620,000, that's salary and benefits combined. And this year, we're anticipating 658. It's an increase of $37,000, which is a 6% increase. And this is a reflection of, we have, Councilman Paul and I would discuss this a little bit, of the Obamacare coming in beginning January 1, that we were anticipating a 7% increase. And this was the talk amongst local finance directors on what we've seen come across, what PERS, what we thought PERS was gonna do. 7% was the number, the magic number that we all assumed, which is about $20,000 for our city. And as you, if you wanna talk about your recommendation?
Well, my recommendation is that's probably a little too low, given the state has already proven just how much of a failure it can be at projecting what's actually gonna happen.
True.
And that I just think, you know, you, we're already so conservative in everything we're doing, that I think we should be a little bit more conservative here, especially when you see what's happening in the private sector with regard to healthcare. 7% is probably...
Low.
A little low.
Okay.
So, you know, you had recommended maybe you could go as far as 10%?
I, whatever council pleases. If, if we wanna go 15, we can do 15. I mean, we're...
I've heard that this may not be as bad as we think. I always expect the worst. I agree with you, Denver. But I've heard some mumbling, it may not be that bad. And there are some mitigating issues, including the fact that now you got more people into the pool than we did before. So, I, I think it's gonna be real interesting to see what plays out. I too will be surprised if it doesn't go. But I have heard some.
Well, we're looking at.
We're conservative on everything, so might as well be conservative on that, too.
Absolutely.
You know, definitely.
So, 10, 10%? Is that, is that what I'm hearing? Is that, is that, or 15 or?
I think, I think, I think 15 would probably be better. I really do. That'd split the difference between what you're projecting and what, what some of the folks that I'm hearing from that have small businesses are dealing with in the real world.
Yeah. 15's fine. I don't have a problem with that. It's just a projection.
Accrual or GAAP.
Better to be safe than sorry.
I would've gone 10.
Yeah, I'd probably gone 12.
You know, and then if, and if it, if it's not that, then.
Yeah.
Well, it's not a huge deal. It's just a budget number. I would've said 10, but I'm not gonna.
It's a budget number.
Perfect. So, I will bump that up to 15%. Another area that we have not in the past is that for mainly myself, Bill Taren, and currently this year, Bethany as well, we have, the part-time hours have been budgeted for exactly what they've been contracted to work at. And I don't think we've ever actually worked the hours that, that we were contracted, because we've been so busy. And because we have such a small staff and because of all of the workload and the, the state mandates that we do have, the reporting, we have budgeted extra hours. I was, for myself, I was previously budgeted at 24 hours. I don't think I've worked 24 hours in a week since probably, maybe 2008. So, we've always had different times where I would take time off or, or whatnot. But now, there's the workload. If I take time off, the work still has to get done. So, I have to come back and do the work anyways. So, we've budgeted both myself and Bill up to 28 hours a week. However, that's not a mandated thing that we will do every year, you know, every week. It's just room for reality coming in.
What's the downside of that, with the budget?
Well, it's, I mean, it, it increased the budget cost. I mean, that, that's what I'm explaining.
The hourly rate, that's it.
No, it doesn't change your hourly rate. It just says that if.
More hours.
I meant the hours, the total amount.
More dollars.
That's all, that's the entire cost.
Correct. Yeah. No, it's, that, that cost, it won't go above that. And, and.
Okay.
The, the other, so those two areas, as well as merit increases have been budgeted. Now, merit increases to make sure that they're not cost of living. Not everybody gets it. Not every- Not everybody gets the full five percent or not every, I mean, it's in the hands of the, the city manager to do the discretion, so it's up to council to determine if that's...
What the max can, or, can be.
Sure.
Yes.
So, those are all, having said, all of that, putting it all in, and, and also, based on last year's numbers, Bill Tarrin worked well above his twenty-four hours in a, in a week. And so, those expenditures are hard costs, but we're also getting revenues to specifically meet those because those are the permits and those are the plan checks and those, you know, those specific building-related revenues are offsetting this.
You know, I've been sitting here trying to figure out what downside there is in budgeting this stuff high because we budgeted very conservatively on all the revenue, which is no big deal. If it comes in, that's great. If it doesn't, we've conservatively budgeted.
Right.
And I've been trying to figure out what the effect is of budgeting real conservative expenses. And I think there is a downside, and that is that by budgeting all the expenses high, you tend to miss when you review later, the fact that you've had some big pops in terms of cost that maybe you should have been looking at. Because if you don't budget them extraordinarily high, like for example, on the medical, I would be a little disappointed if it goes up fifteen percent.
Right.
And if you already took the position, oh, probably over fifteen percent, let's pop it up high and then it's no big deal. But, you know, what it does do is it sets it so high that when you look at performance layer, you know, you tend to look at things that exceed budget and go, what's going on here? And if you set those levels so high, then it doesn't pop out and you don't even notice the fact that you have this extraordinary increase in, in an expense category.
That's true.
So, and, and we're not going to spend the money anyway and we're going to watch it constantly. So, I think I do have some concern with doing it on the expense side. On the revenue side, holding it down, that's fine, it's conservative. But to pop these expenses high, it pulls the, it pulls the warnings out as you review your performance later and you don't realize that this, this thing is a, is a fifteen percent single-year increase because you budgeted it so high. So, to that extent, to me, I think it makes more sense to try and put the budget, the expense, the expenditures within reasonable parameters where we're not too worried about it. You know, if it goes over ten percent, I'd have been looking at it going, what the heck's going on? And I don't see that at fifteen percent.
Are you talking, can I... Fifteen, are you talking about the added hours?
No, I'm talking about, I was talking about health insurance.
Obamacare.
But it, but it was thinking about generally...
I thought you were moving on to another issue.
No, no, I, no, I was thinking about, it's a general statement, across the board on these, okay? In other words, I've been sitting here thinking the whole time, generally speaking, what's the downside, if any, to budgeting these expenditures at higher levels and saying, let's budget more for this?
We're not budgeting more for it, but you're planning for the potentiality.
Right.
That's the thing that's concerning is because we're going to look at a bottom line here later on, you know, of what may be left, you know, to put in other areas. And I've got some, you know, you got to look at this and beat it up. There are a couple of areas that I feel got short change and I want to talk about those.
Yeah, I just, I'm not sure that it makes sense to pick, for example, I keep going back to health because that's where I started thinking about it. And I'm just thinking that putting numbers that are really higher, significantly higher than I think they should be, sets a false level so that as you review your performance later, you don't tend to look at it and go, hey, what happened here?
Not a red flag.
Yeah, because it's not a red flag. You know, we could budget it twenty percent.
I think Michelle's got a...
One, one of the reasons why we do a monthly revenue expenditure report and we show you month-to-date, but, to budget, and then the variance, and then we compare it to the same month last year and the actuals and the budget. So, you have that picture every month to see and that's, that's part of what I'm doing is I'm analyzing it. Not to mention on page forty-seven, we compare the budget for the current year based on last year's actuals and you, and you can see it next to the budget. So, you still have, I, I understand where you're going with that, but I'm just saying there is tools that we use on a monthly basis. I, I do it quite frequently. However, there are tools that I present to you as council to review and that's, that's one area or one way that you can use to, to look at that. But I, I understand your point.
Yeah, and I fully understand that too. The, the big item, I think the big blinking light is how do we do compared to budget? I mean, that's kind of a flashing light. And so, I'm just thinking, does it make sense to just pick numbers way up here? I mean, do we really expect a fifteen percent increase in...
They don't know what to expect, really.
Yeah, we don't.
That's the problem, Rick. They don't really know what to expect. They're all over the place. They're grappling with it just like everyone else. I do know that, well, you probably know this as well, people in the private sector are already dealing with it.
Oh, yeah.
And they're not dealing with it at seven percent. That's not what they're dealing with. So, you know, how in the world is, is the state, Nick, it's going to get away with, I guess it's going to get special compensation.
I think ours is important.
They'll just be another...
It's possible.
Okay.
You know, I, I don't know. If you're, I think when you're looking at it and you think you're going to spend X and then all of a sudden, it's, it's not X, you know? And, and especially since we have no idea and they don't either.
I guess the question is, what level do you want to set this to make lights flash?
Exactly. Are you still going to see it, Michelle? I mean, like Rick's concerned about a red flag.
I'm going to see it monthly.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to be able to see that, we're going to really see what it really is.
Maybe what Rick is talking about, he, and this is reasonable, if you've got like a, say, a, say, five point one percent threshold, when it goes over that, you put it in bold or something.
Right.
You know, I, I get that. That's, that's how you deal with that in, in our real business.
That's usually what I do on the monthlies.
And then when it comes to, starts playing out and you, and it's like, wow, we were completely off base, then you can adjust. We have a ju, we'd have an adjustment that we do, right?
Yeah, maybe.
So, you adjust it. But can, are you done with this page?
Sure.
I don't, I don't want you to leave the page.
You go, no, go, yeah, go.
I want to be sure that you're completed, going through what you wanted to talk to us about. Okay.
You do the same thing, I suppose, by just having a schedule that just shows the, and I think we have this already, actually. Percent over or under prior budget. We already have it.
Yeah.
She shows it.
Okay.
Yeah, we just got one. Okay. You're taking way more hours than you are contracted for? You're, you're under contract?
I, I was hired with the threshold of twenty-four hours, yes, in 2007.
And...
A week, sorry.
And, and, and that's the same with Bill. Bill was contracted for a certain number of hours.
Yes.
Well, and you're saying that that's not reality? And it hasn't been reality for a long time?
No.
So, has that, has that been adjusted?
It has been adjusted, but it's, I've also, we did a, was it in two, three months ago that we did for Bill's? It was for Bill and me and Mike Knowles when we started talking about the foundation, how he was doing, he had a lot of overtime for doing extra work that we've always taken on as a city and we hadn't billed the foundation because it wasn't, that's not how it was ever done.
Right.
In the past. So, we, we did an adjustment this last year. This last year has probably been the largest year of additional work. So, this is the year that we've been, wait a second, why are we, you know, why are we hitting our, our max right now? And that's why we discussed it and decided, you know what? The reality of it is the, the requirements and the workload has not doubled, but significantly increased. And twenty-four hours for myself and Bill specifically is truly not enough to get the work done that is required.
And for Bill, it was a little more difficult to estimate too because we knew what his contract was when he was with our consultant.
Right.
We saw what he did here, but we didn't see what he did behind the scenes because he didn't charge the time to us. He charged it to the consultant. So, that was kind of a learning curve when we brought him in as an employee because there were more plan checks, which he did off-site. And, you know, I, I think we're learning.
Right.
As, as we get there.
And this, I was very thankful to get this. I'd been asking for it because I think it gives you a picture and that'll be a good thing to track long-term anyway because you might be able to see, you know, cyclically, annually, and then, you know, at the end of each...
Absolutely.
...year, you know, so, but, but my concern is that whatever happens with, with Bill, that it never go above and beyond, you know, what he's getting, you know, what he's pulling in anyway on permits. That's a concern there.
Well, that's tracked on my end.
Pardon?
That's tracked on my end.
Okay.
I, I reconcile his time to the revenue that we bring in. So, that's...
And that's also part of the reason for reviewing fees on a semi-regular basis so that if that does happen, you can adjust accordingly within real time.
Yeah. Rolling methodology.
Okay.
Now, you, you mentioned there's been adjustments. What, what adjustments if you're working more hours?
That's what, we, we did a budget adjustment in, I believe it was...
January, February, we did a mid-year budget adjustment. We, she flagged, hey, we're going over our budget. I think we had allotted ten, five thousand or ten thousand dollars extra for overtime working.
Right.
This is, you know, quote, overtime because it's over the budget.
Yeah.
Right. It's not time and a half.
So, we, we came back to council with a mid-year budget adjustment.
Is there any repercussions for going over that so much?
No.
Yeah, more money. No, I meant, does it trigger anything?
No. No. It doesn't trigger any, no. I see what you're going.
But it does impact benefits, employee benefits, correct? Isn't, isn't employee benefits triggered by how many hours?
And that, and that is part, that is what you'll have as the adjustment. If it's ten thousand dollars, that is for your benefits as well.
That additional, right. Okay, go ahead.
That's what I don't understand.
Okay.
Okay, when you go over the twenty-four hours, what is triggered then? I mean, just benefits to a point, correct?
Well...
Every hour you work's more benefits.
Right, right. If you, your PERS is based on the number of hours you work. So, it, you, the percentage that you pay into PERS is based on what you are paid and the hours that you work.
It's all proportional.
It is. It's, it's, if you work...
But it, but it doesn't trigger you to be a full-time employee?
Oh, no.
No.
Absolutely not.
Nowhere near that.
No, no, and that's, and part of the requirements for that is that it has to be regular and for, at least for me, it's budget and audit. Those are the two times where I'm doing more than my definitely twenty-four hours a week. You know, I'm, I'm definitely, you know, I'm making through the reiterations, like whatever we have from today, I can have by Monday. So, I, I have some work ahead of me in the next couple of days. So, it's definitely like a time crunch and Bill as well. He'll be going along normal and all of a sudden, we're building a new house. Okay, you know? So, that means, you know, plan checks, site plan reviews, or I guess that's Jennifer. But different, different work is based on the project at the time. And so, it's not like every week, it's, definitely doesn't trigger full-time.
Okay.
Okay. Before, are you done with? Are you finished? Okay. I, I want to stay on this page. I pulled last year's budget.
Okay.
Because I always do that to do a little comparison. And the thing that really throws me off, and I talk about this every year, I think, it seems like I do, are the personnel percentages.
Okay.
You know, I'm looking at last year's and as I'm looking at oh-four, oh-five, yep, that's fourteen, and I'm looking at oh-five, oh-six, yeah, that's sixteen point two, and I'm going on down and then all of a sudden, for no reason whatsoever, when I'm looking at oh-nine, oh-eight, uh, no, excuse me, oh-nine, ten, last year's budget shows that it's eighteen point seven percent is the personnel percentage and this year's budget tells me it's sixteen point two percent. None of the, you know, it's personnel percentages are calculated by dividing operating expenditures, excluding capital expenditures, blah, blah, blah. None of that has changed. But yet, the number has changed in oh-nine, oh-ten, the number changed in ten, eleven, the number changed in eleven, twelve.
Well...
So, why is it doing that? And, and as well, again, in twelve, thirteen, so how much, you know, so now I'm looking at eighteen percent here and...
Right.
And, okay, so why?
Okay.
Why did that box change if it didn't change in oh-three, oh-four, oh-five?
I got you, oh-nine, ten, or nine, ten?
Yep.
And ten, eleven?
Yep.
I will look into those two because I'm not sure on that one. But eleven, twelve, and twelve, thirteen, you have to realize this is a budget and now we have actuals.
Okay.
So, eleven, twelve will change because it's based on actuals, whereas in the previous year, it was based on budgeted, estimated. Does that make sense? It was, you're projecting what you're getting.
If I'd seen that it was the year prior, I would have gone, okay, that makes sense.
But it's two, it, it's a, it's like a three, you've got your current year, which is thirteen, fourteen.
Mm-hmm.
Twelve, thirteen is what we're projecting. That will change next year.
Mm-hmm.
It will definitely change next year. Eleven, twelve is going to change because now we have the final audited.
However...
Right.
It starts at nine, ten.
Right.
And ten, eleven.
I will look specifically, but I, that's, I will give you an answer for that.
Okay.
I'm not sure why those are changed.
Okay. And then what...
I might be able to help.
Okay.
Wasn't that an interim period where we had, you know, interim people?
But, but the numbers shouldn't have changed though. It, it's based on, yes, I see where you're going with that, but the numbers should have been locked in. They're formulaic unless something was reclassed based on an audit and I caught it, you know, later in the year, but I, I'll look at that.
Wouldn't Don Powell, et cetera, and all that change the amount expended for personnel?
It will change, it should not change the exact same year number for the next year. But yes, I see, it, it will fluctuate the percentage from year to year. But see, these numbers, she's saying the nine, ten, nine, ten number is sixteen-two and, and the previous year, it was eighteen-seven. So, she's like, why are those change, those percentages?
Where are they at eighteen-seven?
No, no, I know. She's looking at the budget.
What I always do is I pull out the previous year's budget and I actually will lay them side by side and I will look at things that way in addition to going through it, in addition to sitting down with Michelle.
Right.
That's, that's just me.
Oh, so you're comparing another document? That's the problem?
Yes.
It's, well, it's not a problem. It's a good thing to do.
It is.
I don't see it as a problem.
We've got a lot of...
Be my formula.
And then my other question, because I am doing that, is I'm looking at, you know, 2012, 2013 totals, salaries and benefits at 6:03. And then when I look at the bottom line number on your draft budget for 12-13 salaries and benefits, it's 6:20, which is quite a bit higher.
Right.
Than, you know, what supposedly we'd budgeted for, you know, well, not quite a bit, $20,000.
Right.
So, that makes, that kinda skews what's then happening with, you know, project, or your proposed budgeted salaries and benefits. Because it really jumps up $55,000 from the previous year. So, help me with that.
And that is specifically for the building that we, like, this is the first year we've had Bill as an employee.
Okay.
And like Jared said, we had him, he was here three days a week. We figured 24 hours a week, everything would get done that we needed for building. However, he was doing stuff on the side that Norris Repke had built into their, their fee for us where we didn't see. So, when he came in, he's like, well, I've gotta do this, and I've gotta do this. And we're like, wait a second, we have 24, 24 hours budget for you can't go over. You know, what, what are you doing different? You know, and so that's when, and actually, Ani brought a lot of it, gave us a lot more understanding of, yeah, clarity of, oh, okay, so, this is a, a service that was provided to us but was paid through a percentage of 80 percent that we weren't aware of, that there was like five, when we asked, we thought there were two, you know, parameters, I went with it, there was actually five. So, again, we're tracking it to make sure the revenues cover that, but that is the big reason, is that we, we did not allow for the proper amount of hours.
Okay.
And that, I mean, that, that was our learning curve last year. It was a whole fiscal year of having him as an employee.
If that's the case, why don't we just take over a longer period of time for his work?
Why don't we what?
Why don't we take a longer period of time for him to complete his work?
Why does it take?
Down building process?
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's.
That, that would be the alternative, right? That would be the alternative.
Exactly. Exactly.
We keep the 24 hours a week and we say, okay, now, you, you may, you won't get inspections the next day, Monday, Wednesday, or Friday, but he's, he's already full for this Friday, so we can't see until next Wednesday. And, you know, we've always had a pretty fast process around here.
Yeah. Is, is there a way to charge for that? Extra?
That can be looked at with this new.
Just, just, just a question. Just a question.
Yeah. I mean, there is a way. It's, it's done in other cities that way, if you want.
Not that I want, I'm just asking the question.
Expedited? To expedite it?
So, yes.
We just increased, or we just increased our fees, or we just went through.
We didn't, we haven't increased it yet. That was the.
That was a study.
Heads up.
We shelved that?
Discuss. It's gonna come, no, it didn't get shelved. It's gonna come back to us.
I didn't remember.
It's gonna come back on the 25th.
Okay. Well, here's, here, let me just throw this out here, because we ran into the same kinda thing with Jennifer. Jennifer was contracted for a certain number of hours, and this was her, you know, how much it was. And then we found people wanting, and I'm gonna go ahead and flat-out say the chase word, Chase Bank wanted to, you know, have things done, and they wanted it to do on days or hours where she was not here. And we were getting charged for that. Okay? And then we, remember, we brought, asked the question, brought it up, and it's like, that needs to be, the savings needs to be passed on to the customer. You know, if they wanna be here outside of the normal hours or the hours that are allotted, then, you know, people will expand their work schedule to fit whatever you allow them. If you say he's gonna work 30 hours a week, I'm pretty sure he can work 30 hours a week. If you tell him 35, he can do 35. Tell him 24, and it can't get done in 24, well then, you know, if they wish to expedite, great, we can make allowances for, we can make, put something in place where that can happen, or they can wait an extra week until he has the time available. It's just concerning to me because it started out as one thing, and, you know, if we don't keep this thing in check, it can completely get out of control.
Okay.
That worries me.
Now, Michelle, I understand your, your issue because you, you get things in waves, just the nature of what you have to do.
Yes.
That's, that's a little different.
Bill kinda gets things in waves, though, too. I mean, there was a real dead time, you know?
Because she's got a legal obligation.
Yes.
Which is different.
Very true.
Okay.
Very true. Yeah, you're right. Absolutely right.
Very true. I mean, it's certainly policy direction free. If you tell me 24 hours, make it 24 hours, just know we'll have some unhappy folks out there because they're not used to getting what they want.
Yeah.
And, and what we're hearing from the residents, and, and, I mean, we already.
Yeah, we hear that when he's not here Tuesday, Thursdays.
We only hear on Monday.
I know that's true. I actually know that's true.
Well, on the website and on, on the TV, it tells very clearly all the hours and all the different. That's right.
It does.
How much money are we talking about? The spread between what we need to do to keep everybody timely responding to? I've been through the permit process here. It's outstanding. It gets done very, very rapidly, efficiently, this, this town is noted for that.
Yep.
For its, for its permit efficiency.
Very true.
What are we talking about?
10,000.
In terms of additional cost over 24 hours that we're paying for that?
24 versus 28 hours, 10 grand, maybe?
Four hours.
Well, you know what I?
Four hours a week, so.
200 hours.
16 times.
Maybe an hour.
What, what, what we were looking at last year was $74,000 for him, and now we're looking at almost $89,000 for him. Okay? That includes not just his salary, but also his benefits. You have to take the whole picture in. So, that's in, just in one year. Is, I guess, as long as what the permits are coming in to match it, then you're great. But if the permits are not coming in to match it, and you've already got somebody who's expanded themselves, they have to be ready to contract themselves.
So, that, that was.
Yeah, has to be.
I kinda sit on that one.
Offsets everything.
I, 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 every additional hour has to be explained by a certain plan check, and I have all the plan checks, and I see how many hours and what, what the fee was for it. Yeah. No, it's tracked.
Didn't we just build all that into this survey that we did to?
Yes.
That's part of it, but that has not been adopted yet.
That's the clarity Ani helped us realize. Right.
Okay.
That's why we paid her the $8,000.
That's correct.
And cost allocation in a city this size where you don't have, it's like this one person is doing this thing, and that's all they're doing, is a lot more complicated in Go Park.
Yes, it is.
You're doing 10 things.
Yes.
And I understand that.
Well, it's like a small business. You do everything.
Exactly. Michelle and I had that conversation. If the trash needs taken out, you take out the trash.
My wife.
Been there, done that.
I think there's an issue to keep in mind as well, that, that backup that you're talking about, that four hours, that backup that could accrue from not having that four hours would be exponentially increasing backup.
Right.
So, as that backup increases, it's only gonna get bigger the more it increases. That's something to keep in mind, too. Again, it is what it is, but the more it gets backed up, the more it's gonna get back to them.
Yeah.
So, you're currently budgeted to take it up to 28 hours per week if needed.
If needed.
That's, that's, that's fine.
And there has to be work.
And that's what a budget is.
Yeah, it's all regulated by housing.
It's all, yeah. So, we're good.
Yeah, isn't gonna do a plan check on plans that aren't there.
Exactly.
Are the fees reasonably proportionate to the service?
Yeah. Oh, absolutely.
It should be 100% spot on right now.
I would assume it's a big deal.
Next item.
And it comes back when you, when you.
It's not a big deal.
Again, when you come back and look at your fees again, you're using that fully burdened hourly rate based on that amount of hours.
Exactly.
And so, you come back and it gets adjusted.
Yeah, but again, it's people that are demanding on days that are, they're not open. I think that's, that should be charged.
Yeah, this is where we can charge them that fully burdened hourly rate. Project specific, you know, I, I'd maybe time into materials, you give us a $1,000 deposit and, and we'll credit your account or whatnot, you know? If you have something that needs inspection on Tuesday, we could send Bill out there for one hour at $57 and 33 cents.
Or something or whatever, I understand. Yeah.
Okay, it can be, it could be looked at.
I think you should just take a look at that.
Yeah.
It's nothing dire, of course.
You have to keep in mind that Bill works in other cities as well.
Sure. Correct.
I don't understand why.
And when he, and he drives to drive here, all that kinda thing.
As does Jennifer and all of our other contractors.
Right.
What's next?
A second.
Thank you. You knew this page was gonna be a more exciting page than most.
Always. Always.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Now, our capital improvements. For the next year, we have four budgeted areas, and what I've shown here is the projects as a whole. This is not just next year's cash outflow. Our, our catch basin and lets, as I had mentioned, is that we're still waiting to get the final confirmation, but Alcum's pretty positive we'll get the 200,000. We've already received the 100 that we're doing this year. So, the total project is 399,860. And as I mentioned earlier, is that potentially $99,000 is what they're saying that is our city match, and that's for our maintenance men to be, to maintain them. And that's something they'll already do, so it's not an additional cost, but as a project, that's what it's worth. Our city entrance monuments is our next project that we have, and based on the, I guess it's been through a year and a half, if you will, that it's been in, we've spent 40, and then this year, we're, we're anticipating 56. I'm not sure we'll totally meet that 56,000. Next year, we have 40,000 budgeted, and we might, whomever gets the new project out front at the gas station, they might be helping, so we might be saving some money there. So, areas, but all in all, if we did every single monument sign as was originally hoped for, and the, I don't know what the tall pillar thingies are called.
Obelisks.
Thank you. Like, I know, I don't know that word. But with all of those as well, if we did every single one of them all funded by the city, that, that would be the cost for everything.
Is there any more from the foundation? They've already just given what they're going to.
I have not heard.
We haven't approached him yet.
Okay.
We're not on the next round of, of signs. We'll, we'll be discussing that on Friday at CDC.
Right. Okay.
So, once I, once I think we figure out which one we're gonna do or what's next, then maybe we'll ask them.
Then we'd come back to the full council to get that approved, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Correct. The next project is our SLPP transportation, and this is, we've put our, our annual maintenance into this one, so you'll see 144,000 of the general fund. That's our normal pavement management that we're piecing out for the two-year project that we'll be doing this next year. Gas tax is gonna fund 226,000, and Measure M's 155,000, and then 125,000 will be for the SLPP grant specific. So, that whole project will be $650,000 this year. So, we'll get a good economy of scale. That's what we're hoping for.
Great.
And then in addition, which is not a capital project because it's not funded, is the curbs and gutters, 150,000. That's not on this improvement project, but we will be doing those through the general fund, as, as I mentioned, and potentially gas tax as well. And lastly, we have, we have budgeted some money for the Town Center Plaza, the football. I believe that's 30,000 this year. We have not spent anything this year, but it is something that has been discussed of council to eventually develop this area out front. And it's, our best estimate is 433,000. We're hoping to get some money from other granting agencies, and I know Jennifer has been keeping her ears open and talking to people and waiting to see if there's something that can pop out to help for this area. So, these are our grant projects.
Hello?
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry.
Sorry. When I was looking at the budget overview.
Yes.
And we were looking at designated reserves.
Yes.
There was obviously a line item there for the Town Center Plaza Reserve. 100 grand had been dumped in there last year, which was good.
Right.
And we're gonna, the conversation was build up the funding that we needed.
Exactly.
I just heard numbers there, but then when I see that what was put in this year, proposed to be put in this year is only $10,000, that's not commitment.
It's not, however, we have 30,000 actually budgeted. So, 30,000 is an expenditure plus the 10,000 that we're putting in the designation if.
The 30,000 expenditure is, is to hire somebody to go after grant funding. Is that what that's for?
And design and to pursue, to start pursuing it, correct? The 110 is set aside, that was, that was the number that we had discussed, just dropping in a little bit. There's a small increase. If council, if you recommend more, then we can, we can put more into that.
Okay. Well, I, I think if we're gonna commit to it, then, you know, we showed a genuine commitment last year by putting, you know, a real chunk of money in there. And then to add, you know, $10,000, it looks like the commitment has dropped off, although you're telling me we're spending 30,000 to pursue it. This is a problem we've seen in the past, or I've seen in the past, is that we might have, although 30,000 is not a lot compared to some of the other numbers we've seen sending, I guess it's Jennifer that's gonna be doing this? So, are, is that who's going to be pursuing the grant funds for this?
It's a combination, folks. We, we really haven't pursued it all that much right now, just with the other Town Center issues that are going on. So, this one's kind of put on the back burner while we sort through some other issues.
Well, we have a lot of code things we had to just clean up, too. There was a lot of little issues.
There's a lot of little issues before we can even get to this.
Because there are all the legalities in the town.
Plus, we have the property owner issues.
We're talking about three or four different property owners, and it's quite messy.
But I think your point's well, well taken, Deborah.
I'm very well aware of all of these issues.
I think your, your point's well taken. We need to.
But you've budgeted, but you've budgeted for $30,000 for it, and then you've got designated reserves for this. We're not gonna be doing anything with it right this second, right? I mean.
Pardon?
No.
So, why not take that $30,000 that you've budgeted and stick it toward the reserves? Because what's gonna end up happening eventually is the need for, if it's part of the Town Center project anyway, then those numbers, that money can come out when we're ready.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Absolutely.
Because that's what it'd be for. Design and project management and what, and going after grants.
Absolutely.
But, you know, if we, we waste money, and we've done this in the past, we've, I remember distinctly when I first got on the council, we wasted $70,000 going after a grant, that even if we had received the grant, we did not even have the money for the necessary match.
Okay.
Okay? So, I don't like to watch us wasting money going after grants that might require a match that we don't have. So, let's, if budgeted money, just stick it in there. I'd really like to see that go to 150,000 this year for the Town Center Plaza Reserve, you know? Because it may end up being something that we have to take several years to build up the funds for. Let's build them up. We've got the money to do it, not, and not horse around with this other stuff yet until we're really ready to start pulling the trigger. That's my thinking.
I, I have to consider with that, frankly. I, I don't see the 30's gonna get used, that there's so many contingencies that is gonna happen. It doesn't make sense to spend money chasing stuff, I don't think, at this point. And the $10,000 isn't gonna make a huge difference one way or the other. It does kick the reserve to around numbers. So, whether we just put the 30 back, whether we take it to 150, which maybe makes sense, is probably, probably not a bad idea. My mind.
Yeah. I'm hoping some other entity steps in to help us do.
And that may happen.
Yeah.
And then we'll have that reserve money sitting there for the design and project management.
And of course, we don't have to spend it.
No.
Exactly.
It's a reserve.
Yeah, it doesn't hurt nothing.
We make it around it somehow.
And it's a general, reserves, so it's for this vote, right?
It's a designation.
Because it'll just get spent.
Majority.
I'm afraid it gets spent, but it.
Yeah, I don't know if it gets spent, but still.
Doesn't need to be there.
Right.
Right.
I'd even want to go higher, but I was being very, very careful.
Okay. I just don't want to put a lot of money in it at this point because I don't know where it's going. I mean, we don't even, we don't even know if we can even do it. Thomas, do we want to walk into that fund?
Yep.
All right. Well, 150, another 50,000 is nothing, really. You have 10 already, you've got 30 someplace else, you'll find that 10 because you've got a nice ending year fund balance, so, good. That's one of the things I wanted to see happen.
All right.
All right.
Okay. This is the exciting part. Council, Councilmember Barnett was very excited to, and very, very encouraging to bring our undesignated general fund reserve balance up to $1 million. And that is huge. It's a $120,000 increase, 15% over the reserve of last year. And again, this is the four-fist vote, but $1 million is, it's, it's a great, it's a big number that everybody can talk about for our little city. And bringing that up to, to a million, and the increases, which actually will be adding more, will be adding another 50,000 to this number. So, our general fund reserves in total will increase probably 30, 30-plus percent because of the, the town center that we're just, we just discussed about. That's very healthy for, for a city to have designations and reserves. That's a significant jump of money. We, the next percentage that I'm talking about is the general fund reserves, the total general fund reserves, this is the undesigned, along with the designations that we've talked about, the 284 plus the 50. That will bring our, that as a percentage of our operating expenditures, and that is the expenditures that we have to spend on a, to keep the city going on the direction that council has deemed, and nothing above and beyond, we're at 50%. And that's huge, considering best practices encourage staff to have it at 15 to 20%.
Where does best practices come from?
GFOA.
Cities that are declaring bankruptcy.
Well, that's, that's my, my point is, I mean.
Forlorn their employees.
The Government Finance Officers Association, the CSFO.
So, it's the legislative analysts, those kind of fellows?
Yes, yes.
Girls?
LAO's not bad.
No, LAO, Michael Coleman's my hero.
They're, they've all, they always have a good LAO.
Oh, yeah, that man's brilliant.
The problem is the legislature doesn't listen to the LAO. That's the problem.
Minor detail.
Well, I want to just say this, because I have so few opportunities to really commend Councilmember Barnett, Mike, or Mayor Pro Tem Barnett. And I was just very, very happy when I found out that you're the person that pushed this forward. I am absolutely 100% in agreement with you. Been pushing this direction since I've been on the council, and I'm very, I'm very glad to see you make that leadership move. So, thank you for doing that. I'm behind you 100% on this.
I can tell you, it didn't meet with any opposition from this council.
Good stuff.
So, I mean, this, this whole council is so fiscally conservative, that that's a piece of cake. I'll tell you, too, I personally, I don't want to see deferred maintenance in the city or, you know, sidestep projects that would really be nice to have, but I'm really optimistic before I'm out of here on this term, we get it to a million and a half. That's kind of what I have in the back of my head. I guess it's out on the table now, but.
Well, I think it would give the, the city staff, of course, a lot of solace as well, that they know that things go bad, things keep rolling.
They've got job security here.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Reserves are good. And more importantly, our citizens.
Yep.
All right. So, next slide, we are here. So, the breakdown of the designated reserves. Now, this is just a majority vote of council to bring this money out. This is not the four-fists. The general fund, we've got vehicle replacement of 20. We just increase that each year. We just purchased a vehicle two years, two years ago?
Rich's truck.
Yeah, Rich's truck. I think it was two years ago, maybe a year ago. So, we just replenish it as, you know, we build it up as we need it. Infrastructure replacement is at 70,000. The Town Center Plaza will now be at 150, so that'll increase by 40, $40,000. VPTK, the capital, now, this is the PEG money. PEG money is received and can only be used for equipment purchases, for television or computers, or whatever used to, to, for our viewing audience. So, that money is specific and can only be used for that. So, that's, that's the buildup right now. We have about 19,000 there. Accrued leave, this is for when an employee leaves, payout of vacation or sick. Then the CJPA retro deposit repayment reserve. We've set aside $40,000 for this. It's, I believe, what, what our theory behind this is to make sure that we have enough to pay for the next year, which is 29, and some change. So, it's, we'll, we'll put more in as, as we go. Our contingency reserve is 10,000, and that is, we're just building that up, and we can continue to build that up for, that's just kind of our additional reserve for anything that we might, council might see fit. It can be used for anything as, as council designates. So, 289 is what we have for our additional. So, we have the million, 289 in the general fund, which is great. Next is our gas tax fund. We have set aside for median replacements, and that is for the drought tolerant or any improvements that we need to do if the planters get, as I like to call them, planters only, if they get injured, then we will, we can purchase the new ones as well.
But the insurance of the driver usually covers to replace those, right? Okay. I wanted to talk about this, too. This is another thing that has a red pen circle around it, because we didn't put any more money in it this year. This is just money that was last year. But it, okay, go on.
We did not put any more in because we did not use, we have not used the budgeted amount that we have for the current year. So, that 10,000 that we budgeted for this fiscal year, that the improvements were not done, that money is brought over for the next year. So, the 10,000 is still, we didn't need to pull it out to do additional. Is that, I'm sorry?
Okay. That sounds good.
I understand we didn't do anything, but we talked about doing something. My question is, can it only be gas tax funds in order to take care of these? And when we're talking about the median replacements, we're actually talking about going in and cleaning up the landscaping.
Correct.
And maybe making, like, taking down the pine trees on Taft that spent, that our public works crews spent an ordinate amount of time cleaning up from, right? I mean, there's long, you know, it looks, that's going to take some work to do, but have we even looked at doing anything yet? Why?
That's a good point, because there's a lot of little pieces of land that we end up taking care of.
Well, exactly. The, the medians down Taft, we were going to put pine trees, you'll remember, they were going to do that to match what was already there, even though what was there was really bad, continuing a bad idea. So, what's there now has been, it's more attractive, although some people don't like all the rocks, but it's not messy. I mean, they're not there. I see, on a weekly basis, them out there with big rakes full of pine needles. So, I'm wondering if we can't figure out what it would cost to at least finish out that portion of Taft to, let's say, center. Getting rid of those, because there's a benefit to doing it, and that's relieving them of that work and putting them someplace else to take care of something besides.
Probably make the folks around there with pools quite happy as well.
I know it would make them happy. But, but I doubt that it could be done for 10 grand, because it's expensive. Well, we need to figure out.
Median replacements, I think you're, we're probably looking at 100 to 150 grand per block. Now, I take that estimate just from the Lemon Trail medians that we installed. We did about three city blocks worth, and it was around $330,000.
But those medians had to be built, too.
They had to be built.
We're not going to rebuild the medians.
Essentially, we will. I mean, we'll have to remove the trees, stump, grind all the pine trees that are there, and there's a cost associated with that. And then, I mean, that's just going to tear up all the curb and gutter. So, I mean, we'll probably look at closer to the $150,000 mark for a city block, and that is maybe two blocks worth, three blocks worth. We can certainly look at it and.
Well, we're, we're doing nothing to, you're saying you're not putting anything in there just because we didn't spend it, but we're not doing anything to build up the reserves for this project, which, which will pay long-term benefits because of how it will alleviate other problems.
Yeah, Lemon Trail, we got a grant for it as well. I mean, we're continuing to keep our eyes open for more recreational grants, so we can continue the Lemon Trail and medians all the way up through Valley. So, we're keeping our eyes open. It'd be nice not to spend city's money on it, use park money.
Yeah, you need a grant for that, I think.
It's an expensive project.
Yep.
We're not using grant money to pay the public works crews to go out and rake up, you know, pine needles, and listening to the residents complain.
What's the concern? Taft has pine trees in that center median, is that the concern?
Yeah, between, between center and mark, yeah.
It's, it's, it's not.
Nichols.
Just a concern. I mean, it's, it's not a big deal, I suppose. I mean, I think it's, I think it's, you know, we've got something that was redone, that's much more current and much more attractive, and then all of a sudden, you run into the heart of, you know, the city, and I almost said another word, but, and you've got these, it's just horrible. It's ugly, the big tall pine trees, and their needles are dropping. You, you drive there during the day, and you will see Rich and/or Mike raking up huge heaps of pine needles on a weekly basis. And that's where they're spending their time. And if we got rid of those things.
Look for a grant.
You know, I got to say, that, that is, that has got to be one of the ugliest streets in Bill Park.
But it doesn't have to be.
It's not the pine trees.
What do you think?
It's that, it's that, it's that, it's that cinder block.
Wall.
You know, foundation, how they ever put that up, I'll never know, but, but they've got pinkish beige cinder block that ought to be underground in a basement, okay? Up for a designer wall on that, all the way down that street.
Those are private walls.
And it's horrible. That was one of my deals before, was to try and get that phased and blah blah blah. It was very difficult. I've been thinking about it since, that maybe it would make sense, you know, we'll have to get a price, but maybe it would make sense to, to go back up to those people and offer, if they won't participate, to spray that with a textured epoxy, if it would last long enough, and just go right down there, pressure wash it, and spray the whole thing with a textured epoxy. And if this is a big deal, maybe take those trees out. I really frankly don't understand why it would be so expensive. I mean, you'd have to remove the tree, maybe you grind it, you probably have to grind it to some extent, okay? But, and then you put something else in, or put some rock, or whatever. Why it would be 100 and some odd thousand dollars a segment to do that? It's not as though you're constructing and digging the street out and doing all that, unless they're going to.
Curb and gutter, river rock, drought tolerant landscape, drip irrigation, yeah, I mean.
Is there water in there?
I'd, I'd have to confirm. I mean, there's still irrigation work to be done.
Yeah, but that's, that's.
Yeah, median replacement is.
To run a drip line is.
Hundred, hundred grand.
But you're also being required to pay, you know, prevailing wage, which is a whole different, I mean, I just had a tree yanked out and ground down, and a new tree put in, and I did not pay prevailing wage.
Right.
You know?
$100,000.
You know? And it makes a big difference, you know? I hear you.
How many blocks do we have of that?
Two or three.
You know, and so you can't do.
Just pass the high school and goes to Lemon, maybe?
Yeah.
Goes all the way to Lemon.
Yeah. So, you're talking about, yeah, you're talking about, even if we just said, let's just do Lemon to Center. Okay, we can't do it all.
Just do Lemon to Center. Let's just.
Oh, those trees.
Yeah, they're, they're.
We have some pines on the north side of the street as well, so it's not just the median. I mean, there's the, the side of the street.
Maybe we should need a grant to do that, I think.
Yeah. It's nothing that can be solved here, but we can certainly put it on a radar.
It's a good plan for a radar. Look for a grant.
Is there, is there anything curb and gutter in there, is there?
Yeah.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I was thinking down more towards, I was thinking there was something down toward the school. It was all curb and gutter, just had some.
Curb and gutter in the median, not curb and gutter.
Not on the edges, no.
That's that big dirt partition with tons of huge pine trees.
Maybe we should look at.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's going to be expensive.
Maybe we should look at all these different little properties that we have to take care of like that on a, on a whole sheet.
Yeah, that, that is expensive.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's, it's on the to-do list.
Yeah, amongst, amongst all the rest of the 100 projects, too.
Well, you know what, really?
But see, that, that's, that's the kind of thing that, that would give them some extra time to do other things, too. Because, because, I mean, even the street that I access my street on, Alice, there's all these, these sycamore trees that they take care of, for whatever reason, because the city planted them 36 years ago, or whatever.
Certainly thin the trees way out. But, you know, the ugly part, that's, that's actually not an unattractive spot. It's okay.
Which spot is not unattractive?
We're talking about where all those trees are with no, no curb and gutter. It's not, it's not, those trees certainly aren't, aren't per se, you know, obnoxious. What's obnoxious is the cinder block walls, and particularly the ones that run from Santiago up, up to.
That is private property, and for us to be spending public funds to improve private property is a problem. However, the medians are ours.
I understand, but the walls are what are really atrocious.
Yeah, half the way you're talking about is City of Orange.
Yeah, south side of Bill Park, north side of the street is Orange.
I understand. I understand. Just saying, if you want to beautify, there's your beautification.
Sure.
And spraying that wall with some epoxy texture is going to be a lot less expensive than putting that median in and trees out, and it's going to be a lot more benefit to the city beautification. I, that's, you know, whatever you want to do, you want to do.
Well, I think we should wait on your, your study.
All right.
Yeah, we can continue to see grants and something.
Yes.
Okay.
But, but can I just, there are other ways, though. Can any Measure M2 money be used for the curb and gutter portion of that?
Yes.
See, that's what my point was, I don't see us, you know, trying to figure out how to finagle that in.
Well, the Measure M2 money this year.
We're blowing it all.
Is completely, yeah, exhausted for the SLPP grant, because they would match what we could give. So, that's where we got that $125,000 to do the roads.
Because streets get priority.
All right. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to be, I was just really upset to see that nothing had happened. We budgeted, and there's no other money being put in that reserve to build up reserves to do something there. Go on. Sorry.
That's why we talk about it.
All right. Next slide. Sewer pump fund. As I mentioned, that we, we did not spend the money this last year to get a sewer pump. We have budgeted it again for this year. Akram said that he believed that this 13, 14, and 14, 15 would be the years that we would have to do the sewer pump replacements. So, we've got 15,000 budgeted for an expenditure this year, and the sewer pump fund reserve is for the next year's replacement. The city sewer improvement fund, we are waiting for the final sewer master plan to change these numbers. However, we are basing the condition TV monitoring reserve and the sewer master plan reserve on our prior sewer master plan. So, we're, these numbers hopefully will change next year, once we get the sewer master plan, and we can figure out what we are going to need to set aside for a TV monitoring in seven, or now, six years.
Yes, six years.
Six years away, and a sewer master plan that will be done in six years. So, it's just a timing right now. So, we're being conservative, setting money aside for the things we know we're going to have to do, or just guessing on the amounts a little bit more than what we had last, in the previous sewer plan, master plan.
So, this has been, this has been depleted because we've done the cameras, and you're just starting to build it back up.
To build back up, yeah.
For six years, seven years.
And we, we built it based on the specific, on the actual report. So, we're waiting for the final report, so we can, but we're just using the prior years and bumping it up a little bit.
We have the final report already, which we'll be bringing to council, but our meeting agendas have been rather busy lately, and this is seven years down the road, so we'll probably hang out for a couple months until things calm down a little bit around here.
I could bring it in June, right?
June's looking to be pretty busy, so.
Golly.
We'll tackle this at another time.
And then we have this new designation, and CLIP is for frontline law enforcement. And we have 800 megahertz radios currently that we use for emergency purposes, and we, we received a letter probably last June stating that we had 11 radios, and we started talking about that, saying, what radios do we have? I don't see 11 radios around here. So, we started doing some research, found out the sheriffs have four, which is good. We want our sheriffs to have four.
One for each deputy.
One for each of the deputies. And then, we discussed it with Lieutenant Gunzal and said, you know, how many do you think would be reasonable for us to have? And he said, two, because we have our own as well, because, you know, if there's an emergency, he's like, we're going to bring our stuff, because it's going to be better than yours. Okay. But we should have one for at least the city manager, and then Mike, you know, Mike will probably be out doing stuff. So, in '16, '17, the county will be doing a overhaul migration and moving our radios that we currently have up to current standard. Based on our 11 radios, it was like going to be $170,000. And so, now we've whittled it down, and he goes, it's probably going to be about 50. So, we've started a reserve for that, and we can use the frontline law enforcement money. So, we don't have to use general fund money for that. So, that's good. So, all in all, our total designated reserves is just shy of 400,000. Actually, it will probably be 400,000 now.
Over 400,000.
Oh, that's true. It's 400,000 we're adding. Yeah, so it'll be over 400,000. And our undesigned reserve is a million, so it will be about 1.4, and that's better than the city's ever been. So, our reserves and our designations are looking very well. And to end the presentation, for June 30th, 2014, based on the budget that is before you, our available general fund balance, like I said, this is your cash that's not budgeted for an expenditure, it is not designated for a reserve, and it is not in your four-fist vote. We're anticipating $800,000 in our general fund available fund balance, which is huge. Last year, 300,000. So, we've increased it by 100,000, which is a great, a great increase. A million in our general fund reserve, it'll be over 300,000 for our designations with the change. So, we're looking at a $2 million general fund reserve, and last year it was a million four. So, it's about 48% increase. Thinking that we've, we've, we're looking good. We're looking very good compared to our previous years, in the light of the economy, how we're budgeting, the improvements of the city that we're doing. Everything looks really well. Our total all-city funds is 2,005,000. And that concludes pretty much the budget in a nutshell. If you have any further discussions or questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. Best of my.
I have a question in general. Is there a way Sacramento can take this from us?
It's not a bad question.
I would love to see what they do for, I mean, how, I mean, any cities in Orange County, just to, how well they're run, how well the budgets and the products that come out versus what our state budget is. It's, I don't get it.
Well, I mean, they've already taken it away from the county.
Right.
So, I was thinking, I'm just curious. Maybe we have to call the forestry department, they, or the parks and recreation, they know how to hide money, I guess, so.
Yes. Water districts.
Water districts.
Water districts are, yeah, enterprise funds have, have a good.
Okay. That's, thank you, Michelle.
Why don't we open it up to the public? Why don't we open it up to the public? Is there any public comment?
Well, most of the reason the public came tonight was to see the smoke and mirrors that somebody used to come up with a budget for the coming year. It's the best one I've seen, and I've seen the last eight. And I was amazed. I mean, she summarized it in one paragraph, I started to say, she summarized it beautifully, I don't think I want to use that word because I think it's really understated. She said, "It's a business-as-usual budget that maintains healthy reserves while undertaking some capital projects." Well, I mean, you just sat through the presentation that I listened to, and we didn't just do business as usual this year. We increased the reserves some 40 percent. We somehow managed to get all the projects done in the last, not only the last fiscal year, but the ones before that, because this is not a one-year result. This is a snowball effect, with the economy, for some reason, leading to people doing things to their homes, and Bill Tarrant being so busy he doesn't know what to do, and.
It's a good thing.
It is, it's all a great thing. But the point is, we've done just a masterful job in this city that has allowed us to build these reserves. So this conservative approach that I hear the council saying, we want to stay right with this, with all due respect to Rick's point about missing something. There's a, when the last two councils were elected, we started doing estimated actuals. It was something that Michelle jumped on a suggestion and then just built it right in. So she's never going to miss anything. She stops each month, each quarter, you get the opportunity to look at those estimated actuals. My question on this budget, as you still aren't audited, so you still don't know the final numbers, and that, by the way, is the reason why those personnel numbers changed. I don't know why the old ones did, but she's dividing by the total expenditures as a dividend and a divisor, for those of you who like arithmetic, or even remember the word arithmetic. When you change the total numbers at the end of the audit, you're changing all the ratios that you used those numbers for. So it's why those old budgets, if you will, will always be off. It's just a question of where you look. But at the end of the day, the job that somebody did in this thing, staying with the conservative approach for this year, is just amazing, in my opinion, and y'all deserve a great big congratulations. It's just a marvelous role. We have no unfunded liabilities in the city of Villa Park, the only city in 33 Orange County cities. It's a masterful job of financial management. We were blessed to find Michelle in need of a part-time job, which developed into mostly full six years ago, and, you know, Ken, oh, one little thing, Warren Repke Organization paid half that $50,000 that you all back-calculated and think, but we wound up paying $25,000 of what was originally $115,000 fine, and Ken Delta went down there, and he wanted it badly himself, and at a closed session, he went down there, you know, I don't know if he charred people, or I don't think Ken Stiles beat him up with facts, but at the end of the day, we wound up paying 25 grand. For, as somebody said, all paperwork.
All paperwork, yeah.
Not being submitted in a timely and proper format. So, but I just thought this was a wonderful budget, I didn't know who was going to show tonight, who was going to pick on frankly little numbers, and there wasn't anybody here to do that, and you didn't do it yourselves. So I just think you did a great job this year. Congratulations.
Great, thank you, Rich. I couldn't agree more with you. It's something to be proud of, that's for sure.
Well, I was there when we set the tone and manner, if you will, for the upcoming meetings, and then I crept out, and I had a doctor's excuse.
That's a good excuse, Rich.
Thank you.
Glad to see you doing better.
Thanks.
Can we have some light?
No, yeah.
Thanks.
Any other questions of staff? Yeah.
Now you can see the real numbers.
Ah, we can see it. I have a quick question, while apparently you're going to have one, Deborah, but the tuna boat, did we get rid of that car yet, Jared, or it's stolen back, or what do we, what's our plans with that thing?
A tuna boat?
Crown bed.
Why is it called a tuna boat?
I don't know.
Monster, long and big.
It's the police interceptor, right?
It is.
Uh, no, not yet. She has about 100,000 miles on it, 12 years. The truck, the F-150.
Natural gas.
Both of them are natural gas. They're ready to explode any day. We're just going to wait until that happens, and then we'll likely buy another new vehicle, surplus both of them, sell them off to Ford of Orange again, get a new truck that Mike and Rich can use when one of theirs is in the shop, and then that Bill Tarrant can use when.
So the idea is a kind of a two-for-one down the road?
One down the road.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
That's the reason for the vehicle replacement reserve.
Yep, okay, just curious on that.
We'll get a gasoline, right?
We'll get a gasoline, yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
I hate CNG. I mean, we're on our second engine with this F-150 already, I think we just replaced a radiator maybe six weeks ago.
Yeah, it's rougher on the motor.
That's the wave of the future, what are you talking about?
I know, I know, right?
CNG.
Due respect, you know, the code.
Compress. All right, any other questions?
They're not questions. This is going to be quick, because we covered almost everything before you.
Yeah, we scrubbed this baby.
Yeah, we did. Well, I liked, you guys scrubbed it multiple times, so this is my only real opportunity, although Michelle spent a good bit of time.
Proceed, please.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You always act like I shouldn't be doing it. Yeah, I should, I should be doing it. All right, on the draft, page 6, these are just, this is minor stuff. When you're talking about form of government, and it talks about council, it's the very first paragraph, council members serving no more than two full terms, there needs to be a clarification there in a lifetime, because that's the way it is in the city of Villa Park. Many other cities will allow them to not be served concurrently, but you can serve more. So I think that should be clarified.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's a simple one. We beat everything up on that, we beat everything up on that. On page 80 of the draft. Down in the narrative portion.
Yes.
There are multiple typos, that's very unlike you. A lot of them, I wouldn't point it out.
This must have been a late night.
It must have been. I mean, they're like, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, okay? So just catch them, because you're going to put this in for a great award, and everybody's going to read every single word you wrote. And then I had a question about eight, excuse me, the info tech support. You're budgeting $9,000, and it says that you're doing that for the idea of, oh dear, is that the one I wanted to talk about? Oh, I think it's the, what's going on with the promotional video, that's my question. You're budgeting an additional $2,000 for a town center promotional video?
Oh, this is for Dan.
For Dan. This is something that Ryan was working on here, just a thought.
Able TV Company Services?
Because we lost the high school students, they're no longer providing videos for us, whoever took over the program after Dr. B. We're seeing how we can get some programming for VPTV. So we budgeted this extra two grand for Dan Finchermaker, our new IT consultant who's back there running the cameras right now.
Okay.
It's another way to outreach to the community and help spread the word, increase communications. Will it work? I don't know. But maybe we can populate VPTV and the website and our YouTube channel with some promotional videos. Is it the town center? Do we do the town center as a whole, pick out one business a month and run some promotional videos? And maybe you've seen the, what's coming to mind is the 25th anniversary video that we did 25 years ago. Something along those lines, 26 years ago now, I guess.
You know, there's also, the junior high has a CVTV as well.
Who?
And Mr. Trabig, I think his name is, and he does a very good job with the kids over there.
For sure.
That may be something to have both of those involved with.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the high school does, I mean, they still, Dr. B still gives us some of the programs that they do, and obviously we're having, this, we've been working with Dan to try and address some of the concerns that we've heard from you guys regarding communication with the residents. And so that, the reason that's there is because it did come up previously with the town center issues, and so we chucked in a number. So we're kind of looking at some various ways to do that, and whatever that number comes out to, we'll see, but we're just, it's sort of a spitball, just going to see what options are there to kind of increase that communication and engage our residents a little bit more in the website, in VPTV, in coming in here and talking to us, and just engage them with you guys and with us.
I think that's great.
Yeah, that's great.
That's wonderful, because when you produce anything now, it's you running back there and trying to run the.
Exactly, and that's part of it, is, I mean, right now, it's Jared and I that do a lot of it when Dan's not here. Dan does a great job for us when he's here for council meetings and for any other meetings and things, but when he's not here, it's us running it, and we're running the website, and we're running the eNet, we're running all of these things that, maybe there's some options, if somebody has some better ideas, do a little better, and a little more.
Plus, he can't really take it, he can't go out into the, you guys don't go out in the field, but he can go out in the field, is what you're saying?
Exactly.
And maybe produce four pieces a year for that price, at least?
A phenomenal job.
Yes.
He actually does this in Placentia as well.
Okay.
And does very similar situations, so.
And does any of that, that can't come out of pig, because that has to be capital improvement, correct? Okay, all right.
Yeah, any equipment that we buy for these types of things, we can just take funds with. We, they completed with Todd, and he gave us a pretty firm note that we can't pay for.
We tried.
Yeah, I know, I know you can't. Okay, then I did want to ask the question about tech support, because it's a small chunk of money, but you're saying that you revamped the server in 1213, okay, and that's good, and now all of a sudden it's costing more because the city's using Office 365 for all users, so that's.
Office 365 is what allows me to work at home when I was out on paternity leave, I guess you want to call it, and at night, and at 2:30 in the morning when I'm feeding the baby, I now have access to my email via my smartphone, which we've never had before.
Okay, good.
If I read it on my smartphone, it shows that I've read it on my computer. What a concept. So, yeah, you know, it's costing a little bit more money, but it's more professional.
It also allows us to sync calendars and to be a little more in communication with you guys. It allows us to work while we're in the field, allows me to do things while I'm out doing code enforcement, I can still be doing work sitting here. So it opens up a lot of doors, and while there is a cost there, there's a.
It increases efficiency.
Totally does.
That makes all sense. I just didn't know what it was, I'm, you know, your answer is adequate, so we're going to see it costs more all the time, but it's for a good reason, you'll be more efficient that way.
Yeah.
Okay. I want to talk about the public safety page, if you don't mind, that's 84, because I expect somewhere, when I'm looking at the proposed budget, to see some of the same numbers that I saw on the May 28. Now, you're laughing, because I'm looking at the, you know, the law enforcement contract and agreement, I don't see any of the same numbers at all.
Well, in the law enforcement, the law enforcement contract, you have crossing guards.
Right.
You have payment for ongoing recurring, what they call recurring, the 800 megahertz, and another cost that we, CLIP money can fund a portion of it, so that's 7,200 down in the miscellaneous equipment costs. Our traffic safety fund, the revenue we get from parking matches, if you see Fund 4, down there, 18,000. That 18,000 is a match of the revenue, which offsets the contract. So if you take the 18,000, the $1,001,28, the 9,500, the 72.
All right. I got it now. I got it.
But, yeah, it's, I know, it doesn't give you that exact, nice, pretty number.
It isn't, it isn't pretty, and then the cost, but it makes sense now to me.
Yes.
But now it makes sense to me, thank you. And then you were, down here, it talks about the costs increasing by 1.09 percent.
That was the first letter, that's a good catch.
So it's actually 1.1 percent, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
No, that, this was, see, this is why I need you to look at my numbers, I'm the only one that looks at them.
But my men, the men hate that I do this.
Oh, no, it's good.
Oh, so much spare, spare time. I really don't, I just want to do it justice, because you've put a lot of work into it, and I feel we owe it to you to read all of it, and to make sure that it's, you know, as good as it can be.
Absolutely.
The other thing I don't see, I'm assuming that the overtime for the law enforcement to, you know, enforce our fireworks ordinance is built into this, correct?
That is in the cops fund, that's directed special assignment.
Okay, very good. Then that moves me to page 91, which is what made me think about that, is we're looking at the additional expenditure under line 9 and 5309, which is street sweeping.
Correct.
Isn't that supposed to be covered? Won't that be covered? It's an additional expenditure to the city, but there's revenue that's supposed to come in.
Exactly.
And where would I see that? Because I didn't know where to look to find that. And should that not be noted in some fashion?
You're talking about the $2,000 for the two booths?
I'm talking about, yeah, the street sweeping's costing X, I see the expenditure.
If you go page 44.
44.
One, two, three, the third grouping of revenues.
I see it. Thank you very much.
And with this, we'll have to see how this year goes. Street sweeping handles is on Fridays of this year.
Right.
July is on Thursday. So Friday would be our normal street sweeping day anyways.
Right.
We're hoping they'll just be able to cover it on that day.
I would assume that'd be the case.
Okay, well, I just wanted to see that those.
It's a what, what part of the city, though?
Yeah, yeah.
True, so maybe we'll have to go to.
The other half of the city also needs to be done. I just wanted to see that that was going to be a wash, that's all, because it was promised that it was going to be a wash.
A little bit.
We'll see. And then.
Good move, one of the stairs.
Yeah, exactly, right.
Okay, just two last things, on page 93, and I've asked this question before, about adjusting our, the city's MOE with regard to Measure M.
Yes.
And, and I see, I'm looking at this here, and it says, this is an adjustment, an adjustment from what? It looks exactly the same to me.
Okay, maybe that's, maybe I work on that wording. What it is, is in the past, it's interesting, because I have asked OCTA for, I'm like, can you give me a list of the things considered maintenance of effort?
Right.
Well, we don't have a list.
Really?
Okay, so I get to be creative? So what I, I've had several conversations, we met with Kia, with OCTA, and I drilled down, okay, what about this, what about this, what about this? And between Akram, Ryan, Jared, myself, we have created, in the past, it was, we had like four main items that we considered were our MOE general fund expenditures, and we have found several more areas that we can pull money from.
Like the curb and gutter repairs, is that one of them?
That's definitely.
Oh, that always was, okay.
Yeah, but there's.
We've never used it that way before, though.
Right, and that's, and that's part of what it was, because being educated in that and, you know, conversing with Akram, because Akram's like, well, I know this can be done, and I'm like, I've never heard of that, you know? So talking with Kia, we've figured out, now we have a good number, and now we're, we can meet our 263. And unfortunately, they are doing the revamp next year? Is it '13, '14? I think they're going to start looking at the MOE, and they're like, yeah, it's not going to go down. So that'll be an interesting conversation once we start going down that road, and I don't think Akram, Akram is a very wise man, and he's not going to go quietly, so it'll be interesting, the conversations that come out of that, because nor will I. We're going to, we're going to fight for what we believe is fair for our city.
Heard a new calculation, but it's not a financial calculation, it's more of a calculation of what items can be applied against that MOE.
Exactly, exactly.
I would like you to clean that language up, so it makes more sense.
Sure.
It's tough, too, I mean, you really don't want to reduce the MOE, because it's the reason why our streets are in such good shape.
Exactly.
I mean, I know that's true. And then my last one is page 102, and it says, we're talking about, we're back to the bill, and there's going to be adjustments, because this whole building, you know, you